I call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Just for the record, an executive session was held prior to tonight's meeting for real estate and personnel issues. And Commissioner Tindaro, if you could, please welcome everyone to our meeting.
Good evening. This is Lorraine Tindaro, and I want to wish everyone a happy day. Please come to our meetings. Our meetings are always full. And there's always room for one or two more. So please come on out today and enjoy the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Great. Next on the agenda, citizens to be heard. These are for agenda items only. Anyone here in the township building have a comment? Statement? On the agenda, yes. Okay, yeah, come on up to the mic. Just state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Pat Fulham. I live 2011 East Kings Highway.
Okay.
We spoke the other day. He mentioned that we're meeting tonight. I'm here about power surges.
Okay.
Okay, I know you've already heard from different people. But I want to go back to 2023, two years ago. I think it was in July 2023 was the first major power surge, the tree that fell off the bypass over the bridge on East Queens Highway. To date, I'm 27,000 hours in the hole from the power surge that's gone on this township. Since that date, there's been three more. Now, I've protected my house to the fullest extent of building a force field over it. Doesn't doesn't help. I just blew another household power surge protector fried. Is the next thing my house is going to blow on the guy next door or the person down the street. Mr. Mullen, we actually contacted you two years ago about it, and you know, your response through your email was that, you know, it's not really, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, not our issue, it's Pico's issue because they own the lines and whatever. You were very helpful and maybe we should contact. Everybody that we've contacted has said no. Pico, Pico City, my home insurance says, sorry, act of God, can't help you because the tree didn't fall on my property. Some of you may know Greg Vietri. I know he does some work through his township. I've known Greg for 50 years. He said it's an easy fix. He says every time a tree falls, it falls on the 4,000 volt line. The first thing that gets hit, and that's what all the houses are hooked up to. He says all Pico has to do is transfer everybody's house from the 4,000 line to the 34,000 line, 34, yeah, 34,000. And it would protect everybody's house. Now Greg's been lecturing all his life. I think he knows what he's talking about. This, Don said the other day that there's, you're in contact with Pico. You know, I'm waiting now to get my new power surge protector put on the house. My question is what happens between now and then? I don't have another $30,000 to replace all my stuff. So I'm kind of, you know, up against a rock and hard place like that.
I believe not just you, I know.
Oh, I understand.
Other residents.
Completely understand. Down the creek, both my next door neighbors, but the funny thing is that the morning the next door to me, we had the same insurance agent. They covered his, didn't cover mine because the transformer was on the pole on his property that blew. That was two years ago. And that was that was made for a lot of us, but anyway, I would like, you know, the township to do whatever they can, as much as they can, to help prevent disaster.
Okay, I know we'll be talking about it a little bit later. Don, did you just want to mention something real quick?
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Just the only thing I'd say is thank you for coming here this evening. We're obviously well aware and working on this issue. Heard from many of your neighbors throughout the community. And we will be getting into some detail about who we've been working with and some of the updates on that. But just being here is important. That's, you know, there's strength in speaking in one voice. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else in here in the township building? Yes.
Well, I'm a retired teacher and I usually have a lesson planned, but I wasn't planning on speaking.
Okay, yeah, and just state your name. I'm sorry.
Okay, I spoke last year in April. I had contact with Don. My story's a little different. My insurance did pay $27,000 towards my repairs. I'm a widow and retired. I'm very fortunate where I'm at in life, but this is the first time. So I turned it into insurance. My daughter-in-law is some highfalutin insurance person. And she said, you know, your insurance is going to go up. It doubled. So even though they took my my 27,000, now then they doubled my insurance. So luckily I had someone in my place, something she switched me to another company. This past July 31st, I also had installed a whole house power surge, which everyone should know, once it's fit, it's done. So I buy a new one. I have a mini split for the family room in my home. That went out, this is the third time. I don't remember the little date. But it went out the end of July. This time I spent an additional $1,500 to put on a surge protector on my mini split because that's my heat. It's also my air conditioner, but in the wintertime, I'm not going to live in one room because of this. I had a new whole house surge protector on. I have surge protectors on every appliance I own. I just now Wednesday had a refrigerator that was in the basement replaced. I paid over $5,000 this time because I don't want my insurance to go up again. And as you said, I'm not prepared to pay all this money over and over and over again. I filed the, so first time, act of God, second time, act of God. It's funny, today PUC closed me. I talked to a very nice lady. She told me to do a formal complaint instead of an informal complaint. So I'm going to do that, even though I am a little bit down and out about it, I'm going to do it. If I have found that I'm good, then I can take it to a civil case, which means an attorney and time, everything else. So besides the money issue, this is horrible to live in a house that every time it's thunderstorm, it's called for. I cringe, I get every breaker thing I can. As you can tell, I'm very versed in. I get every breaker thing, I call my neighbors and ask for any advice. And I am, I'm getting goosebumps now. I am scared. I am fearful. And I can't keep doing this. Plus, if I decide to sell my home, who's going to want to buy? And I've spent a lot of money on my own putting surge protectors all over the house. Well, last time the one, the water softener blew up. You know, it's just, somebody's got to do something to help this problem not come to my house again. I am lucky my insurance paid the first time, but I, sorry.
Yes, no, no, thank you so much.
That's horrible. Fearful. I've lived in 27 years.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. That's all right. Anyone else here in the township building?
I'm just one thing. I feel your pain. Our family business is in East Bradford, and we are probably 30,000 to 40,000. Every time it thunderstorms, we have to run around and unplug everything. And every time they say, oh, it's an act of God, a tree came down and landed on the line, that's what killed it. We've, we're probably four mini splits in, you know, at this point. You know, we, the last time we got hit, it was about $25,000. Luckily, our business insurance did pay. But I absolutely feel your pain. When it, when it thunders, we run around, we can't operate the business because we unplug everything. We've tried whole surge protectors. We had a 50,000 amp surge protector, it blew the thing across the room. You know, we get power surges like that all the time. So I absolutely feel your pain and, you know, I'm sorry that you go through it, but you know, I fought with Pico in the PUC and to no avail at this point.
Just come up to the mic. Yeah, we have folks on Zoom that.
He mentioned to me that the ones that are more major, like the first one, two years ago, it doesn't matter what kind of power surge protector you have. Because with that many volts, it jumps right over it. So it's not, it's not, it's not a matter of doing us, residents doing whatever we have to do to protect our home. The township and Pico preferably need to do something to protect their customers.
Thank you.
They don't have any problem sending me a bill. And I don't have any problem paying, but now it's getting a little, they don't seem to care. Right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I too feel for you and I know I'm not prepared for that kind of a financial hit. I know our township manager is going to have an update on this. I said this at the last meeting and I'm going to keep saying, I think I said at Planning Commission. Why are we sitting in 1950 out here? You know, all, every week they're putting up new polls? Why, I'm going to do it. I never, why the hell aren't they putting it underground like everywhere else? You know, you don't have to worry about that if it's underground. We have no control over them. We have, and PUC I think is actually the one who ultimately is responsible. But I think we'll find out later, but I think there's been some pressure put in some good places. So we do care.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Abby, anyone on the line? Instead of the engineer, can we move over to the fire truck? I know, Ray, you want to take care of this ahead of time? And then I would like to jump over to Pico, actually. So let's do the fire truck first.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, as, as you remember in August, the emergency service command staff came to the township and did a presentation to show you the, the need to replace a aging fire apparatus. We worked with Glick, who a representative, Chris Ovencain is here. You might remember him from when we signed the contract for the rescue a little over a year ago, or almost two years ago now. But after we, you know, the commissioners gave us the approval and the nod to move forward, we met with Glick, we went through the spec of the fire truck that was ready to go on the line to be manufactured. We did need to make a few changes. You do have a memo in your packet. Those changes weren't, they weren't for aesthetics, they weren't for, you know, any bells and whistles. They were all things that were, you know, needed to, for the longevity of the vehicle or for the effective and efficiency, you know, to provide the service. So those changes, the details on those changes were in your packet as well. It was about $25,000. Even though that's a lot in the big scheme of things for the cost of the truck, it, you know, is actually fairly reasonable. So what's in front of you tonight is the, the final cost for the fire truck. The cost is 1,071,203.
Commissioners, any comments, questions on this? When is delivery date?
The delivery date is anticipated to be the end of December or the beginning of January, unless Chris is jumping up and down that something changed that I didn't know.
Pretty confident. No questions?
No, you? The rescue makes it that long?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we have some of our response, responses to make sure the rescue only goes on the things that it specifically needed to go on. And, you know, we'll, we'll do the best we can to keep it going until then.
No questions from the board? Anyone here in the township building? That's Tony. Come on up to the mic. Tony asked if it's the same one that we ordered two years ago.
No, sir, it's not.
You're ordering another.
That's correct.
Okay, that's.
And, and Tony, you know, I told him we were going to do a wellbeing check because we haven't seen him.
And Tony's been missing in action.
And in January, I would have a fire truck in a barn, trust me.
Tony started walking those trails, never came back.
I know.
All right. Anyone else in the township building? None at this time? Anyone in Zoom? All right. With that said, entertain a motion to authorize Township President to sign a contract with Glick Fire Equipment for the 2025 enforcer engine in the amount of $1,071,203. Moved?
Second.
And second, all in favor? Say aye. Motion passes five zero.
President Mullen, if you don't mind, I actually had the contract here. If I could get your signature, it'll go back with Chris. Glick will sign it, then they'll send it back to us executed.
Okay. Ray is on the ball. Thanks for sending that over earlier.
Yes, sir. Thanks. Chris did a great job. I know it was last minute, but he was working diligently with the, you know, with the manufacturer to get all those changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Well, you got your contract and you're going to leave? We have so much more fun to have here. No, no, get that contract then.
And actually, just real quick, I hate to do this, you know, I almost never do this, but I'm going to ask if it's okay if I leave as well.
That is fine. That's why we moved you up. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ray. Have a good evening.
By the time you get out of here, I want the Phillies to be in the lead again. Or nothing.
And Mr. Vima's all, I would like to move up the Pico Power Surge discussion since we do have two residents here with very serious concerns.
Yeah.
Free. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Take care.
As, as you know, and they said, this was on past agendas and it's something that we have been dealing with in the office for, you know, since past couple years now. Yeah, there is an issue Kings Highway. I just want to recognize Eric Hansen from Representative Williams' office is here tonight. Representative Williams and his staff, Bill and Eric have been extremely helpful in getting this advanced to the proper individuals at Pico. Thanks to their work and the work of all the residents that filled out the forms that we put on the website. We did send those to Pico, letting them know this is, this is serious. There's a significant issue here. And they have acknowledged that issue, which, which is in and of itself a big step. Them to say, yes, we're recognizing there's a problem. They have dedicated and committed to resolving that problem. It's not an immediate fix. That is unfortunately what we had, what I have to say this evening. They're in a design phase, as our understanding from communication from the representative's office and Eric, if you have the opportunity, if you'd like to say a few words in a moment, that'd be great. But the, they're in a design phase and it's going to take several, more or less till the end of the year, I believe, give or take. And then the actual fix will take several months into 2026. We do not have an exact timeframe, but the very fact that they're committed, they're acknowledging it's their problem that is causing this.
That's a good sign right there.
Huge.
Hopefully.
And that is directly as a result, in my opinion, of all the residents speaking together and bringing it to the township's attention, bringing it to the representative's attention. I don't, I don't believe this would have been acknowledged by Pico without that work. So really just thank you for, and thank your neighbors for taking the time to fill that form out. I do want to speak a little bit more about what PUC's mentioned to you earlier today. That's excellent. But Eric, am I missing anything? I just, I wanted to provide the opportunity because Representative Williams' office has been extremely helpful. As has Senator Moos. They've been in contact with us as well, but everyone's pulling in the same direction on your behalf. That much we can say.
Yeah, no, yeah, everybody, like Don was saying, I'm Eric Hansen for Representative Williams' office. Representative Williams and Chief of Staff Bill Shell are sorry they couldn't be here tonight, but in their stead, they wanted to make sure I was here just to make our presence known and know that we're taking this very seriously. I've only been, I've been in the office about less than two years and while there's a lot of things that Representative Williams is definitely concerned about, a fast, they're different levels, right? I can tell you that for this particular issue, because of the scope and the magnitude of what the problem is and how many people it's affecting, he is not really very concerned, but very upset about the situation. And I can tell you that we, obviously, and Mr. Don, I think we, you and I talked on the phone before too. And, you know, we, we explained, well, we're not the boss of Pico, right? Rep. Williams isn't Mr. Pico, right? But we, we do have our contacts with Pico. We contacted them, like Don was saying. We actually initially got a timeline response of, well, it's going to take about two to three years. Rep. Williams, Chief of Staff conveyed that to Representative Williams and Representative Williams did not think that was a satisfactory answer in the slightest. So we responded to them and said, that's going to take too long. We need a quicker response. And like Don was referencing, we got a new timeline of about 2026. But even with that, our concerns are, well, what if this happens again in the meantime? What are people going to do, right? What, what in, and also what are we going to do about the financial situation? So we're actually waiting on feedback about that right now. But I can tell you that we're, we're on top of it. We're staying in communication with them. And we're going to coordinate at all levels wherever possible. So I, I, I'm a resource. Our office is a resource. If you need more information or just frank, quite frankly, someone to talk to about the situation, because I can tell you a lot of times people call us about issues and they kind of just need someone to talk to about it. And just to hear someone that actually cares and recognizes this problem. So our number's 484-200-8256. I'm going to be here till the end of the meeting. If someone needs to talk about any other issues, state-related issues, we help with more than just Pico. But again, we're here to be a resource and we're, we're happy to, you know, be in communication with County Township. And I can tell you, Don, it's been super helpful on, on your guys' side just to know what your perspectives are, what you're seeing, so we can be on the same level. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I do have an update from the township's perspective as well. Obviously, the township has some infrastructure along Kings Highway. Specifically, in this case, some streetlights. And it was brought to our attention, I know there was a significant investment in LED and streetlights throughout the community. The, the lights themselves have these communication nodes on the top. This allows the township, if a light goes out, to know that it's out rather than wait, waiting or driving through and seeing it off or waiting for a response from the public. They communicate with the system we have in the office and we can identify which lights are out or which ones need replacement, get our contractor out there to fix it. Following the last surge, several, several of those nodes, how you want to put it, exploded. Yes. So we did, trying to replace those, we're in the process of doing that. But with the boards, I wanted to run it by, but I'd like to submit the claim as well on behalf of the township to get, it's not a great deal financially, but I wanted to submit a claim to Pico to see if that, we're eligible for any reimbursement on that.
Commissioners, comments?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's an excellent idea if we submit it or we're just making it known that, you know, our township was hit pretty hard, not, not just residents throughout. So, yeah, absolutely.
The question is, does it go all over the township? At the moment, we, we are aware of primarily up on Kings Highway communities. That isn't to say that there may not be other areas that have experienced it, but they have not reached out to township at this time.
But that might be a good start if we're filing it as well, along with the residents.
I keep forgetting to ask, is there any possibility that this could have something, a power surge could have something to do with our brain? Our fried brain? Yeah. Yeah. Get ready to send another one in.
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We have had to replace quite a bit of electronics over the past couple of months.
All right. Residents, any, any other comments, questions on this? Helen, come on up.
I just want to thank you for what you guys have been doing to help facilitate, you know, communication with Pico and the representative's office and everything. I really appreciate it. And the response from the emergency services, the times that this happened. The response was wonderful. Just now we need to see it don't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. So Pico comes through with a solution?
I do want to, before we update, the government relations individual that we have been dealing with has been wonderful to work with as far as communication. They have, in acknowledging it, they, they trying to keep us informed of what they're doing on their end. It's obviously a big project and one that they need proper time to do, right? And I recognize that. And they have been doing a really good job in communicating that throughout. Once it was really raised to them from our standpoint, once everyone filled out that form and submitted it, the communication has been very, very good. So just wanted to get that out there, that, that they are, they are working with the township in order and on behalf of residents to find a solution.
Right. And do all residents along the, what is he, Kings Highway? I'm sorry. Are they aware that they can fill out these forms for the reimbursement?
Fly, for lack of a better term in my mailbox, from the gentleman I believe, Grant, is it Grant?
Grandview out of the street.
That, you know, he must have got hit the last night and was trying to organize people. So, yeah, that's how I found the form. You know, because after all, I kind of just like, become part of our lock, which is sad, sad, okay? And so I kind of, once I found that and I talked to Don here the other day, so everything, it seems like there's a lot of people that are invested in it. And it sounds like you guys are invested in getting problems resolved, so.
The township has something on the website about it too. Yeah, you can file.
We've, we've received about, I'd say 80, 85 of your neighbors filled that out, which is, oh, perfect. Good.
We're very lucky at this, you know, where we are today with our manager and with the relationship we have with Dan and his office and Katie Muth and her office. and with the relationship we have with Dan and, and his office and Katie Muth and her office and Danielle Frillot and her office. We, we really have some of the best, uh, people out there looking out for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right, anyone in Zoom, wanted to jump in on that?
Yep.
All right. Let's, uh, get back to the original agenda, uh, do we have an engineer on, online? Throw me off here.
Ross asked if I, I believe he was, uh, Bonnie had a conflict, he asked if I could just introduce this, this topic for the board.
Sure.
The, I spoke with, uh, our engineer Gilmore, specifically the township engineer Ross,
Mm-hmm.
Um, regarding his involvement in the, uh, the King's Highway Park Task Force, that's, that's currently ongoing. Um, really in that conversation and I, we, we spoke about it at the task force meetings, um, getting him on board, uh, to, as we develop a plan for that property, really bring it to life, develop a sketch plan, a concept that we were able to share with the public. And then also, of course, try to get some cost estimates. Um, and he's putting together currently a PSA for us to, to, uh, see what that would run, it would be a limited engagement, so to speak, uh, the task force is a quick one. We're hoping to have something in place, uh, towards the end of this year, early next year in order to go after grant funds, uh, through, uh, when those grant windows open in twenty twenty-six. Um, he does have, his, his team there does have experience working these types of projects in other communities, uh, very successfully. Uh, he's coordinated with them, so, uh, I believe at the end of the, end of the month, at September business meeting, we will have a proposal of your consideration, um, and hopefully be able to bring him on, uh, to help support the more technical aspects of the design for that, that wonderful property.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
Just, I, I do want to add in that I had another, uh, nice conversation with Lindsay Beecher from EAC, who is really invested in doing the, um, natural features, doing the inventory and wetlands and full, like, natural resources, uh, inventory of that land. Uh, I think that's part of her, uh, doctoral thesis or master's thesis, so. What a gift. So great when residents give.
Mark? Yes, Tony, one up? Uh, King's Highway Park. Backman Farm.
Backman Davis Farm.
What's that?
There is electric up there.
Not yet.
It's up there.
Yes.
That's what it was purchased for, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
And
Just a park.
Trails.
More trails.
We'll throw a bench or two on there, yeah.
Yeah. They're, yeah, we're, they're, they're facility now. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. And he's always into the outdoors, uh, activities.
Tony loves trails.
Uh, anyone here in the township building, any comments on this? Is the idea of having an engineer kind of put together the ideas that our task force will actually, uh, develop the next couple of months, looking forward to it, anyone in Zoom? It's a discussion item.
Hmm.
The next time around, we vote on.
Absolutely.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting. Thank you. And the D C E D, let's move down to that. Mr. Remazol?
Thank you. Commissioners, um, this is in some ways a formality. The, uh, the board had approved the resolution as a, as a condition of submitting a D C V grant application, multimodal grant application.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this would be for the full replacement of the, uh, the old county meeting house road bridge that is currently under, it's, it's out, has been out for several months. Uh, there's emergency repairs happening today, ongoing, and nice should be wrapped up um, and reopen, the road will be reopened within about three to four weeks, uh, weather dependent, of course. Um, ultimately, that, that repair, it has a timeline with it, we will need to do a full replacement of that bridge. Um, we worked with, uh, Gilmore to get a cost and then preliminary design associated with that replacement. The, the concept that they came up with was a little pricey and we are looking to see alternatives. That was approved at the, the last meeting for the hydraulic study. Uh, but at the time, we did submit a D C D, a multimodal grant in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars. The cost estimate from Gilmore was not received in time to get that approved in the resolution and received word from D C D that they really liked to see that in there. So this is a redo of the resolution that was passed and adopted in July with the inclusion of the total amount of the grant request down it. This is an action item for this evening, if the board would be so, so kind. Um, they are looking to move forward on the evaluation of that grant application, uh, quickly, and this is a missing piece that they'd like to see for consideration. Happy to answer any questions, uh.
Comments, questions?
I can't wait to say yes.
So, yes.
Easy enough, residents here in the township building, any comments, questions on this?
The Grant Master.
Now, this time, uh, anyone in Zoom? And this time, entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, this is updating the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Evans, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Go for it.
Passes five zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, we'll get that submitted this evening.
All right.
We already took care of two point two, two point three, the T Mac, D V R, P C, multimodal transportation study, that's a mouthful.
Thank you, Commissioners, uh, this is very exciting.
Okay.
We've talked about this in past meetings, I know we've had a few hiccups along the way, but, uh, around a year, year and a half ago, about a year ago, uh, T Mac Transportation Management Association of Chester County submitted a, a grant through D V R B, P C, uh, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Committee Commission, uh, for a study specifically focused on multimodal, uh, pedestrian cycle transportation along the Route thirty Lincoln Highway corridor, uh, connecting Coatsville to Downingtown. Um, I had my, the first kickoff meeting was yesterday and there was a initial consultant that, that was selected, went through a reorg and unfortunately was not able to continue with the study, so they had to, a little bit of time went by until we had the new consultant under contract. But they're good to go, um, this, this project will move forward very quickly. Um, we, they're expecting, the, the, the start date was earlier this month, technically, but yesterday was their first meeting. They hope to have and they need to have a, a full report in the hands of the, the commissioners and the public uh, by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Timeline is quick, but it's going to involve a lot of, uh, uh, meetings, uh, site visits, uh, public comments from, from members of the community, of course, buy-in from the board as far as what the direction that's had important corridor uh, will look like in the future. Um, it is, it is very exciting, it, it, it's, uh, it's, I think it's great because it definitely, from a county and regional perspective, shows focus on town township, they really want to have this corridor serve as a model for other communities that are connecting to, um, urban centers, city of Coatsville and Downingtown Borough. Um, they view that transportation network as vital, uh, throughout not just Pennsylvania and the Southeast, but Delaware and Jersey. So they're hoping this will be a pilot model report that can be served as, uh, replicated elsewhere throughout the entire region. Happy to answer any questions and, uh, more to come.
It's exciting.
It is. Township really is the place to be.
Yes.
Setting the example.
A lot of favor here.
Yeah.
And people want to be a part of it.
Yeah.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
No.
I'm looking forward to that. Uh, here in the township building, uh, residents, any comments, question? Anyone in Zoom? Looking forward to that, I know it's going to go quick because June's just around the corner.
Before you know it.
That time flies. All right, next, uh, the MMO, uh, I'm sorry, what?
Let's get one of this year.
Sorry.
No? Oh, okay. Uh, two point four, the MMOs. Do we have, is Lisa able to join us this evening?
Lisa.
Um, well, this, this is, uh, administrative. Um, each year we receive documentation indicating what is the obligation regarding the pension fund for township employees, uh, uniform and non-uniform. Um, this was listed as discussion item, just to bring it forward, um, but this will be on the, uh, the September business meeting agenda, uh, for approval. Um, but it, uh, just sets the rates in which, uh, based on the pension funds and the expectations as far as the future needs of that pension fund in order to stay compliant with, uh, regulations and, and make sure we have the funds in order to meet, match that commitment that was made for a current and, and past, future township employees. Um, you know, just, just what is that amount, that varies based on the amount of, uh, um, you know, the, the, the expected need within that fund based on current employees and, uh, potential future. So more to come at the, uh, business meeting.
Right.
But just wanted to get, uh, get that on the agenda.
Commissioners, comments? See it every year.
Here. Here.
Residents here in the township building, questions, comments? Anyone in Zoom? Uh, no further discussion, we can move on to two point five, the salt shed discussion. Don, who wants to take that?
I'll start it out, but I'm gonna send it your way in a second, um.
Don, you have a, a salt shaker or one of the grinders, I like the grinders that break down the.
I did not feel the chill of, uh, of snow in the air today, so, uh,
Yeah.
Not worried about it just yet, but, uh, let's get into it.
Thank you. Uh, we, as was brought to the board's attention, um, earlier this year, uh, the, the existing shed that we have, the township, uh, Public Works Complex has been there for decades. Um, it's a wooden structure and over the years, just with the, the wear and tear and the strain of, uh, you know, several hundred tons of salt each season, uh, some of the walls are starting to, to give way. Uh, the roof is leaking, um, it's, it's in, it's in poor repair. Um, the, there's a concern regarding the integrity of that structure and there's a need to find an alternative location, we, we cannot just put the salt out on the lot, it needs to be covered under MS four requirements. Um, so we have to have it covered and, and contained. Um, Director Huggins has been exploring different options and I know we tried to find a, a lower cost option, uh, doing it in-house, if you will. It, it, the suppliers, it, it, we could not make it work unfortunately. Um, the, the technical work and there was also a liability issue if we would do it ourselves, if something would occur. Um, that, that would, could be an issue down the road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, I know we are still exploring different options with that, but at this point, wanted to make sure where the season does turn to, uh, a little more chilly, we have this conversation, update the board with, with some of these options that, that Director Huggins has identified. I will turn it over to Director Huggins for anything.
Director Huggins.
Can I ask one question before we go? The condition of this right now presents danger to the lives of the employees who would have to work with it. Am I correct? I believe so.
Yes.
Thank you.
And environmental issues as well.
Yeah.
Raining.
Yeah, you can't water drain it or spill it out of the waterways and stuff like that, adjacent to our shop down there. Um, pretty much, Don, pretty much said it all, um, any questions for me about, you know, what's going on? Um, the new structure, would you see the price in the packet and stuff like that? It's higher concrete walls, they're going to last, um, when I talk to them, it's like twenty, thirty years plus. Um, but the steel roof that I showed you a while ago, same steel roof, but the walls are poured concrete with footers and everything, so, hmm, once they put it there, it's going to be there, so.
Just, uh, talk about the difference between, so it says, uh, Steelmaster Building under E V Tech and then Steelworks, it says fabric structure, what's the difference?
So, I was not, like, with the fabric structure is a woven type of fabric.
Okay.
And, um, with that, with the lady who explained it to me with that, with their engineer is, uh, they'll come out, they'll place the fabric over steel structure, so if you think of like, uh, a big, heavy-duty tarp.
Okay.
But we have a lot of trees down there and I didn't risk a tree coming down on that structure poking a hole in it. And they won't come out, or we, if we have to, we have to pay them to come out. Or they give us the stuff to get up there and do it ourselves.
But it's actual fabric.
It's a, it's a fabric roof, yes.
Okay.
And it's big and they said it's real big in the Midwest, in the plains out there, because it's less trees and stuff out there, it was real big out there, but you know, around this kind of place with trees and stuff that can fall and puncture is not idea.
So, and it's only, what, like seven thousand more for the steel structure?
Correct.
Okay. And then what's the difference between those two and the PennDOT style structure?
So the PennDOT style structure, if you see up on a bypass, the way the dome is.
Yeah.
And you can actually, they, yeah, drive in and it's, it's pretty big structure there with them, different types of, uh, PennDOT structures.
Okay. It also comes at three hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, very good, yeah. Uh, so when I was looking around, trying to find, you know, the pricing and asking everyone, so I just wanted to put that in there to show, you know, the, the cost effect of, of different styles.
Would the, the steel structure building work for what you?
I believe it will a hundred percent, yes. They would deliver it, um, they deliver it and, you know, the contractor that you have there will build everything.
But it would be built on top of a cement structure?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so with the, the wall, the high walls and everything like that, the salt will be touching just the concrete, not the steel structure. And that's coated with, uh, a zinc, um,
Okay.
thing, so it don't rust out. So I had big questions about, you know, salt and rust and stuff like that, so.
Just a question, because salt seems to eat concrete, how does that?
They put a, um, a glaze type of finish over it. So sort of like if you go, uh, went up and down of a concrete highway, like you say down there Baltimore and stuff, they have a lot of concrete highways. It's a glaze that they mix into the concrete, so it doesn't heat it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions? Anything else, Josh?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, and the steel is the worst, I mean, they said the price is, the price jumped with just the steel, reinforced steel and stuff like that within the concrete walls, so it's like. Yeah.
I know you, you're kind of limited on the space where you are, do you have an idea of where you would like to place?
When we showed, the last time Abby showed on the thing, it's going to be in the same steel, it's going to be in the same exact spot.
As the current one or?
Where we're standing at.
Yeah, next to it. Okay.
Yep, it's going to be right in that spot there.
And, and what will happen to the present structure?
Uh, we just empty it out and, I mean, we have to.
I know you store, you store items in the back.
Right now, we have the plows in there.
Mm-hmm.
So the plow spreader, so they don't get beat up, but, um, the one side still have some salt in there. So we just tran, once that's built, we transfer everything and just kind of, you know, leave it empty and, or put, you know, whatever we can to hide in there right now, so we do have equipment that we've seen out. So we just stick that in there for now.
What, I, I guess, what's the timeline, because we're, you, you're going to get salt delivered soon, I'm assuming.
Yes, so he's saying if we can get this all taken care of at the end of the month, get it voted on at the end of the month, he can get the concrete guys out there starting October, weeks in October. He said that concrete have to set, once they pour, have to set for at least thirty days and then, once they have that done, the, uh, the roof work will be already there and they just get, bring the guys in and, you know, erect it and stuff like that, so.
And I'm assuming you're going to have to use the old salt shed, thirty days puts us, at the end of the month.
Yes.
Thirty days puts us in November.
It's going to be a tight window.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So you may have to have salt delivered in the old shed then?
Yeah, I would, I can order it in little batches, I can keep it off the, the walls, but you know, we do have enough salt down there from last year to maintain anything that may come in, uh, November or December, you know? So we do have salt to deal with that.
Okay.
And then once we get that built, you know, I can order how much we can, we want that within our, our contract.
Okay.
Yep.
And how much more? And how much more salt would the new uh salt shed hold compared to what you have now?
So I, we calculated for eight hundred ton.
Additional eight hundred.
Oh, total, total of eight hundred. Okay, and, and what do we have now?
Right now, we probably roughly have, on the one side, we probably roughly have like three. So I did get it bigger because the township getting bigger, we get more real estate here, so in the future, I, I was looking a little bit ahead of time for the more salt.
And Don, did we look at? Do we have the funding to move forward on this project?
We, we will, some of the, and that was one of the benefits of the road program coming in under budget this year by about two hundred thousand, so we, we should be able, we have to get PennDOT approval to use liquid fuels uh to help fund this, but uh I believe we should be successful in doing that. So a good portion of it should be able to come out of liquid fuels. Um, and then from the capital fund, we would be able to cover the remaining, um, if need be. Um, the, the one thing I wanted to add on to about the salt is of course, last year's, remember, there was salt shortage throughout this region. Uh, thankfully, we were on top of it and ordered ahead of some of the storms, so we were one of the last, I think, to receive delivery of salt before it was shut off for all, most municipalities and people were scrambling to try to receive the salt. Those that weren't had sufficient storage uh for larger quantities and stockpiled ahead of time and were able to help out if need be. Um, but that is something that, that uh, you know, it doesn't happen every year. We need a significant number of storms, but uh PennDOT does receive the, the first pick of salt when it comes in off the train, so whatever they don't use, we get.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Having that extra space would be helpful also, you know, we do have equipment in that side, the backside of that building. Some cost, the, the vehicles and equipment that are located in there. Um, getting them out uh away from the property that could be uh structurally questionable is obviously a, a priority. And uh once i- if and when this is installed properly, we would do a structural assessment of that building to see if it is able to be repaired for a storage standpoint. Um, it's in, it is looking pretty rough and I, I welcome, if you haven't had a chance to go down to the public works complex recently, please let us know. We'd love to show you what we're talking about because it's uh it's not supposed to go up and down.
Thank you.
Go.
All right. That's what I was wondering. Can, can, could it be repaired just for an overflow, like if we really needed to have?
It'd cost probably way too much with this work.
Yeah.
You have to put more in it because the way the salt shed is connected to the other building.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're two, you know, they're together. And if you, if you, more than welcome to come down, get a visit. I can show you how, if you go in the other way, the wall is actually, you can see it.
Bellowing. Eight hours, probably salt and probably eight.
Yeah.
How old is the shed?
It's been here longer than I've been here, so I think it's back in uh, it's, I don't know, I think like early eighties.
Really?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Wow.
Yeah.
That salt's pretty old.
Yeah, and, and then just talking to people, talking to builders, you know, and they saying that's, you know, that kind of shed is like a fifteen or twenty year type of deal for salt.
Wow.
So it, it served its purpose.
Yeah, thank goodness. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, if you do go for the tour, just make sure to check out the twenty-five thousand dollar.
Toilet, you said.
Yeah, it's just the toilet.
Yeah.
Yeah, they added an extra toilet.
Well worth it.
So we'll discuss this at the next September meeting to have an action item.
September bid.
Uh, residents here at the township? Comments, questions? Alright, anyone on Zoom? Move right along, uh board minutes to approve August twenty-eighth. What did I, what did I miss?
Building lighting improvement.
Oh, okay. Thanks, guys. Jump back, you know, I crossed it out because I thought eco.
It was part of the.
You know, I had the word lighting and I'm like, I thought we talked about that. Yeah, everything comes back to the, uh, building lighting improvements.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, and, and this, the chief is, is out of the office this week, um, but we'll be returning for the business meeting. Um, and this was brought to my attention is that the parking area behind the, in between the township administration building and the uh police department building, the chief from a security standpoint, safety, a lot of vehicles come through there. He just, he feels it is a little dark in terms of it could use a, some improvements in the lighting um out there. Um, so this would be essentially that they has worked with the install lighting elements on that, that property in the past. Um, and would like to explore ways to improve that lighting without, you know, causing, wouldn't be stadium lighting. Um, but just from a safety and security standpoint, that is a request from the chief to improve safety around the township complex.
Is this generally just around the township building? It, it is dark.
Yeah.
From the front to the side, leaving in and out of building in the evenings.
He's primary, the chief is primarily concerned with right behind the building here. Um, and then as vehicles come up from public works, um, especially at night, if anyone coming out after meetings, what have you, the, the police department do park along that side, so some improved lighting along that drive um would help improve security.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the, they're a twenty-four seven operation. Um, so they're, they're frequently out there when it's, it's not daylight. So a- after the meeting, I would, I would feel free to check out the current conditions.
Yeah.
And see uh, see what he's referring to, but just from a safety standpoint, uh with the you know, individuals coming, because we do have individuals coming to the police office a- at all hours of the day or night, there is a security phone to have an officer respond outside the building. Uh, so if a resident would come up, he wants to make sure they feel safe and secure with proper lighting.
Commissioners, comments?
Sounds good.
Oh, I, I always notice that and when I notice people, you know, residents coming. Uh, you know, we're leaving here, we see residents standing out there waiting to get ahold of the police and it's dark. Stupid question. One, uh, I guess they call it Lancaster Avenue over there in that, in Exton or East County, whatever it is. There's a couple of spots where the intersection overhead light has like this um more of like a purplish glow.
Yeah, that blue tint, I've seen that down in Exton.
There's no glare, it doesn't bother anyone, but it, you see better with it.
Yeah, I, I seen that too down in Exton and I was wondering like, you know.
Yeah, somebody told me that's the LED going bad.
Oh.
So, cause I asked the same question, why is it purple? And somebody said that LED, the, the white of the LED is not working correctly. And actually it needs replaced, uh, but I don't know that to be a hundred percent fact that somebody told me.
I will ask our lighting people.
Yeah, that the purple is actually the LED going bad.
Especially with, we've got residents right here who have, you know, have nice solitude except for when we all come pouring out after the meetings yelling and screaming and partying.
Well, just to add on to it, chief did talk, he, because he wasn't gonna be here and Vetry will be in the building tomorrow. And he's, I'm gonna show him the two buildings where the lights, like or the police building, this building and in the corner, what's uh chief is talking about. So we're gonna figure out how to uh keep this lit up and not annoy this living surrounding people here, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that would be one concern because we have residents on this other side here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna tell him, I'm some sort of shield just to keep the lighting over on our property here.
I'm getting text here. I ninety-five between downtown and eight ninety-five has though, it's non-glare.
Look into that.
Mm-hmm.
And I just remember, was it Colonial Honda, when they were doing the lights? Folks that lived behind it were very concerned about the light pollution.
Yeah.
You know, when they were completely rebuilding their building that they, yeah.
I think it was even before that, but.
Yeah, years past, they just put up lights in the back and it floodlighted.
Exactly. So I don't know if we need input from the residents or or get a, get a schematic on how the lighting will look in the parking lot?
We do require new developments or developments, there's a, a lighting ordinances that require to maintain a certain uh lumen footprint, so to speak, um candle. Um, so we will, you know, comply with the township ordinance.
Okay. Way to put it.
Or Ray will be knocking on your door.
Mm-hmm. Of course.
Code violation. Hey, uh, residents here in the township building? Any comments on this?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Put for a little league meeting. It's been dark out here since then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh. A light setting doesn't help.
Anyone in uh Zoom world?
Yeah.
Nope.
Good night, Tony.
Take care, Tony.
Night.
See ya. Come back now, you hear?
You know, walking trail to get home.
It's gonna be dark.
He's my buddy. Say that. Alright, alright, uh, can I move on to the board minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sound good. Entertain a motion, uh, or if there's any questions or changes needed, if not entertain a motion to approve.
The move.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes have been approved, five zero. Department, we have a check run. Check run, uh, fifty-four thousand six hundred nine to fifty-four six eighty-seven. Any comments on the checks?
Let me get one. No, he's.
Yeah.
No, it looks good for me.
No, it's not. The move, second, moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor, say aye.
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 That check run has been approved. Uh, liaisons, okay, the uh dessert part of the meeting. Uh, we'll start with Park and Rec because that is so exciting.
Always exciting.
And Jane kicking off.
So once again, want to thank all of our sponsors and our hardworking Park and Rec's team and all the, excuse me, all the different departments here in the township. We're doing an outstanding job with Community Day, you know, even in spite of the rain delay, um, Sunday was delightful and enjoyed by many. Um, as a token of our appreciation, we could give everybody flowers, but um we have two very special ladies here in the township building that work diligently. I mean, they go beyond the scope of what their job description requires. And they truly are a reflection of what you would want to have on your team. I mean, endless, tireless dedication to making sure that they serve this community in a way that you would just be super proud of. And so far as a token of our appreciation as the board of commissioners, want to present Ms. Abby swan with some beautiful flowers to say thank you for your hard work and your dedication. I, I admire her so much. Um, and uh we could never do enough to say thank you. And, and these are for Jessica and her absence, we'll put them on her desk and she'll receive them in the morning. And again, thank you for everyone that came out for Community Day. And um, stay tuned because this last uh quarter of the year is just filled with excitement for, you know, children of all ages, you know, we'll be getting, making preparations for our end of the year events and, and they'll be fun. So look forward to seeing everyone soon and all the little ones uh to join in the festivities through the holiday season of Halloween and Christmas.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Good Jane.
In regards to Cog, our, our meeting was basically generally centered, centered around looking for grants. And we serve many municipalities throughout Che- Western Chester County. So what we're doing now is trying to find grants that we can share with each other. And everybody seems to be jumping on board with the open space and park grants. That, that's a big feature for many municipalities. It's so important with people moving into Chester County and knowing they can come to a place where they can enjoy the outdoors, where there are trails, where there are meadows and where they can take their children to enjoy the outdoors. That's, that's really a big part of community, so we're looking for a lot of grants and we believe that there are gonna be a lot coming in twenty twenty-six. Also, another study that they're looking at is affordable housing in Chester County. I don't know what that means, but the medium income of sales that have been generating in and around our community are in the three hundred fifty to five hundred thousand margin. I mean, I don't think many people can afford that, so when they talk about affordable housing, when you're looking at marketing a five hundred thousand dollar house to somebody that might be on a ninety-five thousand dollar salary, it is just not adding up. So, you know, again, they're looking at how can we implement, you know, affordable programs? I, I'm happy to know that uh Calon Township has decided to host uh the, this is the Chester County uh partner, housing partners. Uh, they came to us and wanted to know, can we please come into Calon Township to uh have our first uh first time buyer seminar? And that should be coming up at the end of the month, am I correct? September thirtieth? They're looking at, we'll put that on our website as soon as we get more information. They're working on a flyer. So we'll fill this room with potential buyers and see what we can do to educate people and get uh folks interested in knowing that there's funds out there to support them in housing projects and becoming a first time housing uh buyer, so looking forward to that. So we will be hosting that at the end of September. Um, the other thing, we're just updating the business directory, you know, throughout Chester County for the cog so that we can get everybody aware of, you know, where our business people are in the township, so we can support one another. And they haven't done it in a while, so they're really looking forward to updating the business directory. So we'll be there also. And I'm just proud to represent Calon everywhere I go. It's just a growing uh community. It's exciting, the, 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 the new uh businesses, the ideas, the infrastructures, the, the the Lincoln Highway, the parks, it, it's just, we're just growing and it's a good place to be. And I thank you for supporting us in all of our endeavors. Look forward as we move to the end of this quarter to tie up some real loose ends, so we look good going into twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
You, Jane.
Jane. I'm sorry. Oh.
The place to be.
Let me try to make sewer exciting then.
Oh, no.
And what, uh, the contractors began working on uh town meeting house Granger Lane sewer extension. That was back on August eighteenth. And started to install the laterals on Granger Lane as well, so hopefully that project is going well and I know they're starting on the bridge down the street.
Yes, the, uh, the bridge started last week, I believe, uh, last Wednesday. Um, it's a quick turnaround, three weeks to four weeks.
Okay, good. Uh, also at our last meeting uh for CTMA, uh, Mally uh presented the CTMA twenty twenty-four audit uh to the board and we found it acceptable a- as presented. See, we also motioned the chairperson to sign the sewer capacity reali- reallocation, extension and maintenance agreement for Mainline Health Project. On Lloyd, Lloyd Farm there. And also, uh, let's see, we signed the sanitary sewer easement in lieu of con- condemnation agreement and encroachment agreement for thirty-two oh three Norma Drive, and this is the final easement that was needed for the Ray Ray, Ray Road Sewer Replacement Project. If anyone's been following that, come to our meeting. We, we, we really have a good time. But he shows up though. But uh as long as you can flush your toilet, we're doing a good job.
Oh.
Alright, uh, Dara. Uh, what do we have here?
Do we dare ask?
I will dare ask. Uh, the future expansion plan modernization project, Dara's in the process of acquiring three point four acres of land adjacent to the treatment plant. Uh, the land will be used by Dara for needed detention basins and uh possible future use. Uh, Dara's engineer has begun the phase one land evaluation to verify that the property is free of contamination and liability associated with past usage. Good thing. Moving right along. Hard to believe. Alright, that's enough for Dara. Uh, fire board, we did not meet. We had a meeting scheduled in August. Uh, we had to reschedule for next week in September, so I do not, do not have a report for fire board. Now we can go to historical.
Thank you, um. Historical commission hasn't met since our, uh, since the, the board of commissioners, August, uh, since we gave our August meeting update to the board. Uh, our September meeting is coming up next Wednesday, the seventeenth at seven PM. We do have a lot of fun.
No, we, we do. No, we, we do, yeah, come to the sewer report.
And we can show you how things work for the sewer, uh, when you're here, if you want to use the public.
We have historical pipes.
That's hysterical. Now, um, we have him very busy though, the uh, our, our members did double duty. This Sunday, hosting both the Hexagonal Meeting House Tour and our County Community Day Table. Special thanks to Tom Parr, Donna De Prinzio, Patty De Frogia, Chris Parr. And uh, friends of Spackman Davis Farm Board Member Lard Di Matteo. Uh, wait a minute, she's Di Matteo, no, he's Di Matteo because Al is Di Matteo. For rallying to save the day, uh, we did have seven uh, folks come through the schoolhouse tour and those numbers stay up. I think uh, it's, people are really showing their interest, um. I, I maybe I'll ask Helen, uh, we, you know, we're still waiting to hear back from OCHS on if. They're going to be, if, if we're gonna do that after the house, uh, after your house tour event. Cause I saw in the, in your newsletter that it's not there, but your president sat here a month ago. And told us that they would be getting back to us, but I've sent your president a number of emails from the Historical Commission. And not even a courtesy of, um, sorry, we're not interested or leave me alone, just nothing, I, I. Yeah, ask her to put something in rating would be really nice, uh, cause we're trying to. Yeah, yeah, I was suspecting that's not happening now because you went out, you know, it's in the newsletter that it's not, we just wanna know so. You know, we can keep moving when not getting together for that, ask her to put something in rating, please, thank you. We're busy tightening up our historic resource inventory, inventory map and atlas. All three are needed for the historical preservation ordinance we've been working so hard on. Also putting together our budget for twenty twenty-six, which includes the big two hundred fiftieth blast, it's Backman Davis Farm next June twentieth. And we're looking for a couple of fresh faces to join us, one out, we make history fun, you'd be a great member.
Thank you, Mark, uh, Ingleside. Yeah, come on up to the mic though, so uh, the folks at home here can hear you.
Small signposts that I've been noticing around the township, the H Mill, Ray Corner.
They are Old Count uh, Historic Society and that's what Helen, I were just talking about.
Is that your house there?
They're fantastic. Fifty years.
What is it?
Fifty years. Yeah. Yeah. They're doing a great job with that, they really are.
Alright, Ingleside Golf Course.
Is there Lincoln Highway?
Oh, I'm sorry about that, Lincoln Highway, I'm, I'm just trying to rush through here apparently.
Well, I'll make it quick for you, I don't have a report.
Look at that, I read his mind.
It's like the Historical Commission, the way the weeks fell, that group hasn't met, I think, uh, I think they're meeting next Monday, right?
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's very good call.
I Ingleside Golf. Club memberships are available with discounts to Cowan residents, seniors, juniors, family and veterans. July revenue and activity were solid, thirty-five hundred plus rounds played. And a hundred twenty thousand in revenue for July. The new food and beverage carts are generating attention and improved revenue. Expanding alcohol products choices to meet changing demographics has grown revenue. From beverage sales. Planning for events and fundraisers throughout twenty twenty-five, led by John Frank as event manager. Are expanding, beginning to attract and plan for twenty twenty-six events. Joel Cummings, the new golf pro. Is fully engaged in golf lessons. Golf course improvements are providing greens ready to play and the facilities are improving. Through the Ju- July droughts. Heavy user traffic and severe heat affecting the greens' conditions, these conditions are being addressed. And, and improved. Next golf meeting is Monday, September twenty-ninth at noon. Nice job Nicole and entire Ingleside Golf Team for the robust twenty twenty-five. The weather is improving, so come on out to play Ingleside, that's it, thanks again.
Thanks, Lauren, can we just make a note on the record, this is a great report. But we, the sport did not take up the approval of the expanded beverage thing there. So there, they have their beverage cart, but we did not approve the, is the higher alcohol things.
The stateside.
States, you know, the.
Was at the meeting.
Yeah, no, we, we discussed it, but we never, we never actually approved the hard seltzer, I think we were discussing. Yeah.
Alright.
Great, additional business.
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to say, uh, you know. On September eleventh, two thousand one, I was at my apartment on West Side Highway. And I watched the second plane hit the building, I watched the thousands of people come screaming up the street. I watched fire trucks that were crushed get pulled out over the coming days, I saw what hate can do. And in the coming days, being on an island, separated from everything, unable to escape. Having military planes flying along, skimming the top of the river. And no other sound in one of the loudest cities in the world, I learned how much people can love each other. I saw how we all came together, regardless of race, religious beliefs, sexual orientation. Anything, we came together because we knew it's all we had. Here's you all, today, to remember that peace and love are the answer to everything. This hatred will only eat us all up, thank you.
Any other additional business? Uh, public comment? Public comment at this time? Anyone in Zoom? Alright, uh, huh? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Removed? Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, let's not forget.